Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Could we stand for a moment, silent, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice.
Tim and Kim Wilson. All right, Tim. Whereas you are to be commended for taking the time, the initiative, and the effort to create a beautiful yard that contributes greatly to your neighborhood and to the city of Sioux City. And whereas you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty that you have created, and whereas we thank you for allowing other citizens to enjoy your beautiful yard and for teaching by example the laws of beautification in the community. Now, therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend Kim and Tim Wilson of 5,008 Morningside Avenue for exhibiting pride of ownership and being a recipient of the City of the Yard of the Month Award. Thank you, guys, for what you do. Say a few words if you would like.
So do the citation.
Thank you. Say a few words.
We'll take ten tickets, please.
All right, Beth Clark, are you here, Beth? Come on up and tell us why you want to serve on the Active Transportation Advisory Committee.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey.
I'm avid member of the community and a lot of biking, hiking. I have two dogs, so I use the Trail System quite a bit, along with Bacon Creek. So I always say about Sioux City, there's a lot to do, but you gotta go find it. I'd like to be, to help it, to help those ideas and the opportunities come to people, so they know it's there, because Sioux Land's an awesome place. There's a lot to do here, so I could bring some new ideas as being part of the biking community to improve what we offer and get the word out there.
Excellent.
Perfect.
I like that thought process, there's a lot to do, you just have to find it, just have to...
There is a lot to do.
Want to find it.
Yep. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you. Appreciate it. Tito Parker, Tito here?
He sent an email, and he got held up, it just came in at 3:57, so...
Okay, well, we'll come back to Tito.
Yeah.
Consent agendas, Street through 14C, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on the item, please come up as I read it, state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council Minutes of August 15th and 17th. Four is a motion acknowledging August 9th Board of Adjustment Actions. Five is a resolution assessing the $500 civil penalty against Bailey's Convenience for violation of beer, wine, and liquor laws. I'll move to amend that to withdraw the penalty because they've completed the state requirements. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Zimmer and Franciscan for Twa's pump for the wastewater treatment plant. This new big group you hired, maybe they could find a way that you wouldn't have to have a single-source vendor for every one of these pumps. That'd be really nice if you could figure that out. I know the answer's no, but...
Pumping old utilities director. We actually called around. We wanted to see if our VFD drive and motor were compatible with these other pumps, and if it, you know, if we were to get a new pump, it's gonna cost about $250,000 to change the variable frequency drive.
It's a game you play.
Unfortunately, the past designs only allowed for this one pump.
I said, "in the future."
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see if you're worth your weight, if you can get that done.
Yep, I will.
All right. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution accepting a Destination Iowa Outdoor Recreation Grant with IEDA Sergeant Bluff and LaMars for the Sulan Regional Trail System Project. B is a resolution authorizing the Assistant City Manager to apply for an Airport Improvement Grant to fund the Update Airport Master Plan or Study Project. Eight are actions relating to street closures. Mike, I should have asked you this, when's the last time you did that?
That's funny, I was thinking about asking the same thing.
Is this a lot of money?
It is a lot of money. Mike Colette, Assistant City Manager, the last full master plan is 2001, so 20 years is really the limit that they want to do it, so we're pushing past that upper threshold right now.
And at least there's a good match or the grant.
Right, and this, we're using actually the infrastructure money that we didn't know we even had a year ago in the capital improvement budget, so...
Great.
Could we have Matt come up before we move on and talk about that $7 million? Just so we have an understanding that what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. We were very fortunate to get that $7 million grant for the Sulan Regional Trail System. We partnered with the City of Sergeant Bluff, City of LaMars. The TSI Board helped achieve our fundraising goals for that project. Also like to thank Angel Wallace, who did an outstanding job on the grant application. So this approves the grant officially. We were notified unofficially a couple months ago, so now we can start getting contracts out for consultants, for bid, and then we can start collecting those funds on a reimbursement basis.
And most of the money will be spent?
We have to have all the projects under contract by December 31st, 2024. All the money needs to be spent by December 31st, 2026.
Got some time.
Got some time. But a lot of these projects, we have to get designing right away, because the clock is ticking.
Get them on the books.
Yep.
All right, and then this will be contributing to that plywood trail that connects...
Plywood Trail Phase 3, correct.
Right.
Yep, significant amount of the funding is going towards that project alone.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Angel, for the grant application. You're doing a great job, and we really appreciate it. If we don't apply for these grants, other cities are gonna get them, so, thank you.
Actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the Morningside area on September 24th for the Starfest Marching Band Competition and Fundraiser. B is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of West 19th Street on September 29th for the West High Homecoming Parade. C is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Floyd Boulevard and Jefferson Street on September 9th for the North Homecoming Parade and staging. D is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Grandview Boulevard and 13th Street on September 30th for the Bishop Healan Homecoming Parade. Have you been invited to any of those, or...?
Not yet, but I hope I will be after I say what I say. I'm just super excited that we're having the homecoming parades this year. I think it's great for the students, it's great for the parents, and it's really part of our agenda, Mayor, that is just really exciting to have back on the agenda with the homecoming parades, and it's really just exciting. Parades bring the community together, there's no question about it, so enjoy, and I hope the students have a good year at West, North, Bishop Healan. East will be coming sometime, won't they, I would think? Oh, and then Starfest, anybody that's been to Starfest, that's an absolutely wonderful competition and fundraiser that they have, so I would encourage everyone to attend Starfest at some point in time.
I judge that a couple years because of my musical background, I should.
I know, I know you...
I thought it was because of your marching.
You majored in music.
Yeah. Nine are actions adopting construction documents. We'll move it along here.
Let's go.
A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the West 3rd Street and West Street Intersection Improvement Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Alicia Avenue Paving Improvement Project. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a settlement and release agreement with Jacob Harland. B is a resolution approving Change Order Number 1 to the Contract with NutriJet Systems for additional gallons of material pumped at the wastewater treatment plant. C is a resolution approving a contract to KP Construction for the 12th Street and Iowa Street Storm Sewer and Pavement Repair Project. D is a resolution approving a contract to Peterson Contractors for the South Bridge Business Park Coal Link Rail Spur Project. E is a resolution approving a Consulting Services Agreement with McClure Engineering for the Plywood Trail Project. Eleven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to G Asphalt Systems for the Sioux Airfield Seal Coat Project. B is a motion approving total payments issued for July. Twelve are actions relating to property. A is a resolution scheduling and consultation and hearing on Amendment Number 1 to the amended and restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan Property at 4101 South Lewis Boulevard. B is a resolution consenting to an Estoppel Certificate regarding the sublease and the Estoppel Certificate regarding a ground lease with SCE Partners with the Surface Parking Sublease to Kirk Parking Lot at 115 and 117 3rd Street and the parking lot lease at 205 Pearl Street.
Mayor?
Yes.
I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest. And could I just run back to 10D for a minute with Gordon? I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. Gordon, this is just one of many steps that have lined up for the South Bridge Business Park with the Coal Link Rail, or Coal Link Business, isn't that correct?
Yes, Gordon Fair, City Engineer, yes, this is one of three or four for that, just that Coal Link area. The rail, Alicia paving, which was on earlier, and then we have the Andrew Utilities.
That's right, yes. It's all lining up very well, so thank doing that, getting that done.
Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor licenses. Fourteen, Board Commission and Committee Minutes. Review the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Those items pass 5-0. Fifteen is a motion appointing Sheri Martin to the Human Rights Commission, replacing LaShana Moyle. Reminder, Sheri Martin serves on inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. If appointed, she will need to resign that committee, or the motion will be needed to include a waiver of the rules that no person shall serve on more than one board, commission, or committee concurrently. What did you come up with, Mr. Waters?
Well, I think we're good. She just needs to submit her resignation for that, so I suppose we just need to ask her to submit that, or can we make this appointment contingent on her?
You don't have to make it on contingent, if you, she has to resign, right?
Yes. Waive the rule.
You have two choices, you have, you could defer it until she puts in her resignation, or you could waive the ruling that she can't be on two boards.
We don't have to waive the rule, she can't be on two boards, so if we vote her on here, she's gotta decide which one she's serving on. Right?
Yes, you would have to specifically vote to waive the rules to allow her to participate on two boards.
I'll move that. Second.
With the understanding that she will submit her resignation.
Okay.
I agree.
Here's your voting panels.
Lisa, just in, if I reach out to her, is that just a written letter to you, is that all that's needed?
Yep. Thank you.
Sixteen is a motion appointing Judy Seaman to the Senior Advisory Committee, replacing Ann Broderson. I move that. Second. Passes 5-0. Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance amending Chapter 25-02 Zoning Districts and Land Uses of the Municipal Code to allow accessory buildings in the NC-2 and NC-3 zoning districts. Petitioners are Todd and Suzanne O'Brien. PNZ recommends approval. You're gonna have to move that up.
I'll move it. Second.
Hearing is now open.
Hi, Jason Gary, Planning and Zoning Commission. So this one came forward as a request from, a request for a zoning change from a member of the public who is looking at making an accessory structure for rental purposes on an existing lot. We looked at it, it was permitted in NC-1, larger lots, NC-4 and 5, smaller lots, but not in NC-2 and 3. So staff brought it forward, that we consider it just in all zoning districts, and, yeah, and we chatted about it, and yeah.
Can you explain why, what's the difference with 2 and 3? That differentiation, or like, what is different about those?
So I'll invite staff, if they want, if I mess anything up, come on forward and tell me. But essentially, when you look at NC-1, NC-2, NC-3, all the way through the zoning districts, NC-1 is probably the largest lots that aren't ag or suburban residential.
Sure.
And then all the way down to NC-4s and NC-5s, where you get into your tighter neighborhoods, where homes are much closer together.
Sure.
And so, in the process of doing the zoning rewrite and then looking and making some changes, it was allowed in NC-1, and also allowed in NC-4 and 5, which are tighter lots, but not here. And so that's why it was, we were asking the same basic question, is why, why wasn't this allowed everywhere? Could we just solve this with a zoning change? But in reality, we thought to ourselves, if it's gonna be allowed in smaller zones, like a 4 or 5, where maybe it might be more questionable to have it on tighter lots, why wouldn't we have it in NC-2, NC-3, which are kind of the middle-range lots? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, totally.
Yeah.
Is there a reason, do we know any reason or background of why it hasn't been allowed in these, but it's been allowed in tighter lots?
Chris Madden, Senior Planner. Accessory dwelling units are actually new to the code, they were not in the code prior to 2015, so it's something new that we've been introduced to with this. More than likely, it's just kind of the in-between size of the lots, about that 10,000 to 7,000 square feet for the two zoning districts. NC-1 is more of an acre, so that could make sense. And that was an option that the petitioner had, was actually to rezone to another zoning district that would have allowed it. We get about two or three of these calls a year about accessory dwelling units, so we thought that would be a good idea to change the code to allow it in all of the residential zoning.
We get some examples of the accessory dwellings that you're...
So...
There were some photos, or some...
Yeah, I would say, just from my perspective, putting on a little bit of my Realtor hat, it's essentially where you've got a main house property, and you've got an oversized garage with a living space that could be above it. Usually, that's going to be in a larger home, not in a smaller home, and it exists within the community, not widely, but it does exist.
Sure.
And so you could finish out those spaces and make them with HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and have their own separate entrances and exits and things of that nature, and that's kind of what we have here. And so it's not widely used, but I've definitely seen it in the past, where it has been almost like a second home on the lot, or like an almost...
I think Chocolate Mansion has that, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, or essentially like an apartment that's above a garage that features separate rental space. So more than likely, it's gonna be a rental space, or it could be, it could be an in-law suite, or it could be, you know, college kids coming home, or something like...
The code allows for three different options. One that's attached to the principal house, but is completely separate from that house, so no entrances or anything that you can go between the two. One is just a detached, separate structure, and then the third would be the over-a-garage type structure, and that's the one that the petitioner is actually requesting to do.
The over-the-garage one?
They have a garage currently with space above it that's unused, and they want to switch that to a living space.
Anyone to be heard? Mayor, did you have any hesitation, or you didn't move this? Is there a reason?
I do their tax...
Oh, okay, okay. I just wondered.
Hearing is now closed. No, I'm just thinking about how I'm gonna lay the back part of my house.
Yeah.
He's lost in...
I wondered, I was like...
In-law house.
Passes 4-0 to 1, I abstain. Is there anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Somebody move...
I'll move, if we waive.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Stay in conflict.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. I'll move second and third reading.
Second. Passes 4-0 to 1, I abstain. Eighteen is a resolution approving an agreement to extend the towing and wrecker contract with Meyer Towing Company. I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we have a three-minute time limit.
Thank you. My name is Chad Peters. I live at 21082 Pioneer Avenue in LaMars. I'm employed by Stockton Towing. Stockton Towing would encourage you to vote no on this. We would not oppose a 30-day extension, but we've already extended it 60 days to get to this point, only to extend it another year. The reason for the extension is given as a time to gather statistical data, which I found in our company in less than an hour. That data should already be on-site, either in the city or at Meyer Towing, and we don't believe there's a need to extend this for a year.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else be heard?
I'm Heidi with Meyer Towing. We're willing to extend it for another year. We are hoping that you'll think about a policy to put in place where the comm center would be notified of the preferred towing company by the officer or by the customer prior to a tow truck stopping at an accident. The customer needs to be directed to call a non-emergency number when calling the towing provider, or if they are calling their motor club, the officer will need to notify the comm center. There are several reasons why this policy is needed. The city is asking us to extend at a very low rate because the data is needed, and we're happy to provide data, but the data is skewed by the wreck chasing. Purpose of contracted rates are to provide our community with a controlled rate when they have a car accident. It's a traumatic event and are often dependent on people immediately available to direct their actions. These people are being preyed upon during this time. There is no limit to the amount that any other towing company can charge, and the insurance company is obligated to take care of their casualty. The rates and the other added fees being charged are astounding. And number three is safety. I'm gonna go through two different incidents that I was personally involved in. Since May 3rd, these have happened. Right here at... Floyd, Virginia? Virginia and I-29, onto the on-ramp onto the interstate. There was a pallet truck that overturned, our trucks were notified by the comm center. We arrived on scene, Stockton's trucks showed up, claimed that they were called to that scene, so our trucks stand down, that's what we have told them to do, and they left the scene. Sergeant Hugendike was on scene, and he really questioned that because the customer was still being extricated from the vehicle. So then we were called back to the scene, because that customer did in fact want our services. That probably was the extra 30 minutes of closure on, to this on-ramp on the interstate. That is a serious safety concern. The next one was by Magnum on Highway 20. We were called there. Stockton 20 arrived at the same time. The problem is, I needed to park behind the protection of the officers that were there because there was a horde of other tow trucks there that did not be, they were not requested to be there. So I was outside of the protection, and I have to walk all the extra time up there to the casualty and try and sort this chaos out on the side of the road, and that means I have to walk back, we have to wait. They were asked twice by the officers to leave and did eventually clear out, so then I could pull up. But what about the citizens in that queue? There's people backing up on the side of the road, they're gonna get hit, you know, it's a serious problem, and this chaos, it's circus to be sorting that out, it's not okay anymore. It's just not safe. His father died in line of duty doing a Sioux City Police Towing Call, and I don't want to be there, and I had to, I mean, we have to do this. We went to the Towing Museum last week, because my youngest son didn't ever get to meet his grandpa.
I need you to have you wrap it up, your three minutes are up, okay?
This is his name, he's on that wall where tourists have died, and I don't want to be another one. You have to sort out this chaos. These people are getting taken advantage of. The community needs this policy. It does not limit who they use as their provider, but it does protect them from being pushed to use someone that does not have everyone's best interests in mind.
Anyone else to be heard?
So if she's calling for an amendment for that, I thought that portion of it had been sorted out previously. Do we have that idea or not? Because I've heard of incidents like this occurring pretty much ever since we awarded the contract. And I don't know if you know that, Nicole, or Chris, if you can speak, if anyone else.
It is not included in the extension at this...
The amendment's not included?
Because I don't know what that language would necessarily consist of, but I have heard of multiple incidents that would give me pause.
Nicole, how would that work in this contract, if it applies to all businesses? It would almost have to be done as an ordinance, wouldn't it?
Correct, I think that's where it would look first.
The contract would be part of an ordinance.
So it's separate? Well, I do think we need to look at safety first.
I was gonna say, I...
For all parties involved.
I would be interested.
Business is business, I understand that, I understand the competitive nature, but safety is safety, and we have to think about that first for the drivers of both companies and for the citizens. And if we need to look at that ordinance, I think that we should commit to doing that.
Well, in mind, I mean, if Stockton had the contract, I would say the same for them. I mean, you bid a contract with the expectation that you're given preference, and that officers or people on the scene are given that preference, or at least that opportunity to make an informed decision, and not just first one there. You can.
The towing contract applies only to a very narrow set of specifics. The case where the owner is not present, the case where the owner doesn't have a preference, but it should always be the driver of the car or the owner of the car's preference where it goes. The words "we have a contract with" should never come out until those, that very narrow set of circumstances applies. Furthermore, the Supreme Court has said, the Iowa Supreme Court, has said that if you're arrested, you choose where your car goes, not the officer.
Fair enough? Well, we'll look into that then. Anyone else?
I'm Jeff Day with Meyer Towing, and we're not in any way construing this to mean that, like, we should be the only service provider. We are just stating that the exceedingly rapid response of tow trucks, you know, because in certain areas of the country where this is a much larger problem, you know, and it does tend to be more in the south, I mean, it's literally like racing trucks to an accident to, you know, who's gonna win the call, basically. We are not suggesting that, like, the customer shouldn't be able to choose who they want. We are not saying that at all. We are just saying that the decision shouldn't be made by who arrives there first, and then, you know, the bottom line is, people get in an accident, many people have never been in an accident. Tow truck shows up, cop shows up, maybe the ambulance, maybe a fire truck, all of these things are happening really fast. Tow truck guy walks up to the customer and says, "Looks like you need your car towed, do you want me to tow it?" If you say yes, then, you know, and this is the way I know that has happened, when my drivers have been dispatched by the city to come, and we arrive, and maybe they're there, then, like, I've approached people that were talked to by, talked to by the Stockton drivers, and they're like, "Well, he walked up to me and said, 'Do you want me to tow it?'" And I said, "Yeah." So, and, I mean, and that's, that's all I'm saying, is that I just feel that, like, if you know, if you have a relationship with Stockton Towing and you want to use them, more power to you. I have no problem with that. But, I mean, what I'm getting at is that, is that that is not really the case here. I mean, I have no problem with Dave's towing being called to the scene doing an accident, you know, and it's just, that's where I'm going with this, so, I mean, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Reminds me of the 1990s, we used to love to do towing contracts about, like, sidewalk sets and hearings, but no matter how we do these... but no matter how we do these, somebody always feels like they were treated unfairly. I don't know how you ever do it right. This would extend it to August 29, 23 if we voted yes?
Correct.
If we voted no, it would be...
The contract would lapse before the next council meeting. And we wouldn't have an approved towing company, as required under state law, for auction services.
So after, if this would pass and we have the one-year extension, so what would happen? What would we be doing for the 23, 24 fiscal year?
Rebidding.
So would that be effective July 1 then of 23, or would we start it August 30?
It would be August 30 of 2020.
So we won't be in the same situation with the rebidding that we are now? We're hoping to improve that?
This has been a very difficult bidding situation, trying to do what's fair and what's best for all parties that are interested in bidding. And, I mean, we're working towards that. I don't know if we'll be able to satisfy everyone's opinion related to the bid process. There are other options. The city could determine that it's not going forward with a towing contract at all and place this back on the police department to handle the option services, which is allowable. Or it can be bid asking for multiple towing vendors, or it could be bid as a single towing provider. So there are other options, and I think staff is looking for direction from councils as we go through this next year time period, after additional historical data is provided and gathered. So the council can feel comfortable that they're making an improvement.
So I understand that there was a pre-bid conference or a pre-bid, what do you call it, the pre-bid?
Pre-bid conference.
Conference that was held. Did some of the issues that are raised now, did those come up at the pre-bid conference?
I would ask...
Generally speaking?
Spiro Bohulas or Chris Grove for comment related to that. They were present for the pre-bid meeting.
Spiro Bohulas purchasing. We did, there was a request for bid that went out, and we did have a pre-bid meeting that was held on April 12 here in City Hall. So at that time, questions and answers were allowed to be given.
And at that time, did anybody object to the way you were bidding it?
Not that I'm aware of. It was a long time ago, but...
I don't think there was any concerns raised at the time that the bid request was made. The objections came after the bids were received.
In the past, it had been an RFP, and I think what I could tell, both parties were appreciative that it was done as a bid process instead of an RFP.
Okay. Thanks, Spiro. Thanks, Chris. Passes five zero. Are there any citizen concerns? Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, go to council concerns. Matthew?
Well, back to school week, and we're ending it right. Thursday, starting up Citizen Academy with the Sioux City Police Department. If any council members want to come root this next... I'm gonna be in the next class, so I'm pretty excited for that.
I'm a graduate. I'll be there to cheer you on.
Friday, we've got the Mario Kart Tournament at the Expo Center. So I'm hoping that Citizen Academy, they'll cover evasive driving. And then Mario Kart Tournament, I can practice, maybe. And then the wiffle ball tournament on Sunday. So it should be a pretty exciting end of our week after going back to school.
Busy.
The wiffle...
I do. So it's this Sunday, and our game is at 11:35. And it says arrive fifteen minutes early to get your shirt and sign your waiver. Yep.
Waiver?
You better believe it.
Waiver?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, you get hit with a wiffle ball real hard. No, I'm just kidding. I don't know.
I have nothing today.
Okay.
Gordon, I was gonna follow up with you, but I can follow up with it about this as well. It was just brought to my attention that over by Perry Creek Elementary, over, there's a sidewalk over there by the bridge. He was trying to describe it to me. I think there are two bridges over in that area, or at least there were two places where the sidewalk was heaving really bad.
The one on Hamilton.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We fixed that one.
So, but he said, what he told me, and again, this would just need to be verified, and I haven't been out there, is that there were two spots. One spot was fixed great, and that one spot was still bad. Again, I can't verify and say that's correct or not.
Why would we be fixing if it's on, is it on the school?
I think it's on that trail or sidewalk.
There's no property owner except for us at that point.
Ann, didn't you and I report that last year, last summer?
Sure.
I thought it was fixed.
Yeah.
Well, maybe the second spot came up.
Yeah.
Subsequent to the first.
I think so.
I was gonna say, I was told about it recently, so I'm...
I remember that one, and that one is a, because the bridge moves, that we had put some asphalt there for a patch. And the other one, I don't know though, so I'll have to look in that.
Okay. The other thing that this gentleman, when we were talking, it serves on the Active Transportation Committee and was just requesting this information, and I think we had this conversation. I don't recall the figure, so I was just asking if our team could put together a number, and I also reached out to Dakin of what it would cost the city to be able to extend sidewalk from wherever we can on Hamilton to run under 29 to be able to connect to the Riverfront Trail.
We're looking into that one. We put that in the CIP for this coming year.
Okay.
Problem with that one is there, there's two signals to modify because there's no pedestrian crossings at those two.
Okay. And, I mean, you have a lot of ground to cover with no sidewalk connection.
Yeah, that too.
So that one was seventy-five thousand, is what Carney had quoted before when we asked about it.
I think that's for the sidewalk, too. I'm not sure about the signal portion of that.
Matt, he said that was including the signal.
It was? Okay, good then.
Just let me know. If that figure is correct, just forward me that information or let me know. That'd be great. I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Two weeks from today, September 5th, is Labor Day, and that's when we spend time to honor and thank our workers, which we greatly appreciate more and more every passing day, how important they are to the community. So that will be on September 5th. I wanted to say again that I'm very pleased that the homecoming parades are back. And Mayor, maybe we will be invited to be in one or two. A long time for a homecoming parade, I doubt. Andy. Yeah.
Dan loves a parade.
I do. I think that's all I have, Mayor. We don't have a meeting next week.
Or the week after.
Or the week after. Fishing next week, so.
Gonna be a long time.
Send pictures. Hey, Matt left, darn it, but I'm telling you, we're gonna mess around this community, and we're gonna have trees so big in Perry Creek that the next time we, you know, we can say all this and we're never gonna have that kind of rain. I was here in 1990. And if we don't get those trees taken care of, it's gonna be a problem. And we need to get them while we can still pull them out with an excavator. They don't, we saw them off, they grow back. You've got to pull those trees out by their roots.
Are they like the walnut trees or whatever they are? I forget what type?
There's all kinds of them. There's a zillion different kinds of trees. You know, the worst case is, there's a bunch of cottonwoods, and they grow fast. And I was, unfortunately, you know, I got elected mayor in 1990, January, and of course, the creek for forty-nine years had never gone out until May. Thankfully, it went out then so that I could catch all the crap for it. I don't want to catch that crap again. I want a plan. Matt says they're working on one. We need to not go another summer here without a plan because you should be taking those out in the winter.
Right.
What do I know? But I know...
Well, you know from experience that it can happen.
I know doing nothing is not the solution. I can tell you that.
Right, right. I think we all learn that in this community, that you can't predict that weather. You can't predict a flood. The Perry Creek floods, the Floyd River, the floods at Dakota Dunes. People thought that would never happen, and...
We've got some in the Floyd, but it's not as bad as Perry Creek. They're just sprouting up everywhere on Perry Creek where we fixed it, so.
They are, Mayor. That was no way to spend a birthday, was it? Because when you say you were there, I mean, you were physically on-site with the flood.
On my birthday.
Yeah, on your birthday you were. I remember.
You said forty-nine years they hadn't been, no?
Forty-nine years it had never gone out of the bank. And then that year. And then I canceled Halloween because we had a nice storm in October. It was a great year of my first year being mayor. I move, we adjourn. I'll second that.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Were you seconding it? It was a great year. Were you seconding it?